Good evening. I will read the regular opening meeting at 6:30 when the public has joined us. The first thing on our agenda that has been published this evening is executive session. This is with the generalist, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, meeting with town council relating to the appeal of number 117-16 Falmouth Hospitality LLC, 0 and 556 Main, and lots 03, 4, and 6, Lantern Lane, Falmouth, Massachusetts. As the Chair, I'm making a preliminary determination of the need for the board to meet with town council in executive session. Is there a motion to go into an executive session, at which time the board will reconvene into open session and invite the public back in at that time?
So moved.
Give that to Jerry. Is there a second? Second to Mr. Fenner, and roll call vote, please.
Thomas, aye.
Duffy, aye.
Fenner, an aye.
Morris, aye.
Duffy, aye.
And we will enter into executive session. Which, oh, we don't have a lot of comments.
No, I mean. One's long. It's too long. We can't do one.
Those will read them.
Yeah.
Good evening and welcome back to the May 4, 2023, meeting of the zoning Board of Appeals. The board had previously opened at 6 o'clock for the purposes of an executive session. The next up on our agenda is public comment. This public comment is for any issue that is not currently on the agenda. Does any member of the public have any public comment for anything not currently on the agenda? Seeing none. The Chair is going to take one issue out of order under open meeting number two. The board was scheduled to review draft decision of 7522 Blue Moon Seagull, 159 Main Street. Due to an unexpected medical absence of a voting member, the hearing is going to be continued to May 11th with the signed consent of the applicant. Is there a motion from a board to continue the hearing to May 11th?
So moved.
Give that to, give that to Jerry over the second to Mark. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Zero knows, I am abstaining. Thank you. Next up, we have new hearings. We have 06120M EcoLand Development LLC, 0 Percival Road, Lot 4, T ticket, requesting the board to review revised plans for the comprehensive permit pursuant to a mediation assented to by the parties during the applicant's appeal.
I have ECO Land Development LLC, 169 Maravista Avenue, East Falmouth, applied to the zoning Board of Appeals for a comprehensive permit pursuant to NGL Chapter 40B for the board to review revised plans pursuant to mediation assented by the parties during applicant's appeal. The subject property is 0 Percival Road, Lot 4. There's no comment from the boards.
I believe there were two letters that were specifically requested.
Right, there were two letters, three letters, and two that requested to be read. My name is Mason Swain. I'm Director Butters, 149 Percival Road. Unfortunately, I am unable to make tonight's meeting. I have a couple of concerns, mainly safety of the traffic flow onto Trotting Park and Percival Road, and the privacy of the existing neighborhoods. How will ECO Land Development deter traffic from using Percival Road, which is basically a single-lane road? On the existing condition plan dated 2623, it shows a 22-foot road widening easement. How can ECO Land Development use this for drainage? If the residents of Percival Road decided to widen the road, has this system been engineered to have a road built over it? I don't see a landscape plan for this development. With this lot being clear-cut, it will take away the charm of two neighborhoods. I would request that a six-foot white PVC fence be installed along the edge of the road widening easement, and property along with five-to-six-foot Leland Cypress's every four feet. I also request this to be installed prior to any building if this gets approved. Thank you, Mason Swain. And then we have another letter. After a lot of thought and counsel, I believe that this is in the best and safest interest of my family to write this letter and not attend this meeting tonight. As I stated before, I have lived on Harness Drive for 45 years. I am a self-employed female and operated a family childcare on this road for 21 years. My mother has ran her childcare on this road for 45 years, and my aunt, her childcare, for 23 years. We are asking the town to stick to their initial decision to deny this Percival project due to the obvious safety concerns, karma run of the aquifer, karma traffic, karma wildlife, and the access point for this property, which is still in question to be legal. The access alone would be a hazard if, and in fact, it is even a legal access point. The harassment has not stopped against us since the start of this project, of this proposed project. I stated in previous meetings, we have been chased by a bobcat, yelled at, threatened if we object to this project, that a nursing home will go up on the lot, and most recently, we've had the police called on us for saying we laid a basketball hoop at the end of the road, which was in fact owned by myself. After this incident, I had Homes of McGrath survey stake my property. Due to this incident, I have had a discrepancy with the lot lines. This developer seems to believe he owns 10 more feet than he does. A stake was put in the middle of my sand pit, and the developer has taken it upon himself to remove my property, a basketball hoop, and drag it into the middle of my driveway and lay it down. Due to this discrepancy, I believe that I am not out of reason to ask for the developer's certified plot plan to be reviewed, reassessed, and clearly marked before this project can even be voted on. Homes of McGrath has clearly marked my boundaries, which extends to half of Harness Drive's tar road. For the safety of myself, my family, and the children, I think it's only fair for this project, for this project, is to ever pass, all abutters receive a 10-foot natural buffer that is already there from the point of the lot lines, and then a six-foot fence around complete property. We are asking the ZBA to help us stay safe in our neighborhood that we have lived in for 45 years, a place where we raise our children, run our businesses, in and in a place that we call home. Thank you for your time, Jennifer Scala. And that's what I have.
Good evening. For the applicant.
Good evening. Thank you.
Excuse me. Apologies, Council. The disclosure is going.
I'm Frank Duffy, a member of the zoning Board of Appeals. I'm going to make a disclosure for your comment. Two points. One, I was not a member of the Board of Appeals when you came here the last time. However, I was serving as town council, and on a couple of occasions, I think maybe two or three, I was asked by this board legal questions to which I responded. They're letters in the file. I did not participate or deliberate with the board or in any way engage in that decision. Secondly, I would like you to note that one of the butters is Patricia Harris, who was the Associate Town Counsel in the office for about 10 years with me. We were not business partners. We were both employees of the Town of Falmouth during that period of time. My intention, if I sit on this board, to listen to the evidence and decide it based upon that, so I ask for your comment.
Thank you. I appreciate that disclosure, and knowing Ms. Harris and that she was with your office, I had thought about that, and I appreciate your disclosure. We are fine with it. I believe very completely and sincerely what you said, that you will listen to the evidence and you will make an objective decision. So I've discussed that with my client, and we're perfectly happy for you to sit on the panel.
Thank you. Mr. Fenner.
I'd also like to disclose that I'm not a Director Butter. I have a house across the street on Trotting Park, along with members of my family. I haven't lived there in years, and it has, will have no effect on how I make my decision.
All right. I appreciate that disclosure. If you're fine with it, that's fine with me. Okay? Again, thank you both.
I also know Mr. Montero, because I'm from Falmouth, but that, I can be a per.
Well, it's the Cape. We all know each other in our different towns, and.
Everybody knows.
And again, I appreciate that. Thank you, sir, and that's fine. Thank you.
Any other disclosures need to be made? Sorry to cut everyone off early. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you very much. Again, Peter Freeman, Freeman Law Group in Yarmouth Port for the applicant. And you know the history of it. I'll just briefly recite it for some of the folks who are in the audience, although they probably know it too. It was actually just about exactly a year ago when the decision of the board was rendered and filed with the town clerk, denying the initial application for 16 houses on this property, five and a half acres. I was not involved then. I was retained to represent Mr. Montero, EcoLand, on the appeal to the Housing Appeals Committee, which, as you know, we did file. And then through procedural things and trying to talk and work things out, as I always encourage, there actually was a mediation. Nobody can disclose what was said in mediation, and I'm not about to do that. But it did result, as you know, it's public record, that we have had a proposal that tentatively was agreed to by the board, subject to obviously this hearing and looking at the plans for 12 units. So that is the first change. We are here, and we submitted the, on March 16th of 2023, as my cover letter said, we submitted site plans and civil engineering plans, a brief narrative summary from our engineer. And I apologize, he couldn't be here, but, you know, we'll have another hearing, and if he's needed, he can be here. And then the house plans have been submitted for your review. And Ed, I don't know if maybe you want to start putting up the first, just overall site plan? I'm going to basically give some introductory things, and then Ed will go through the plans. Great, thanks. And then there's an overall site plan in there. There is a landscaping plan, a landscaping sheet. Perhaps it's not as detailed as some folks might expect. We have certainly expressed to council for some of the butters, Brian Wall, that we're willing to come up with a more robust landscaping plan. We haven't done that yet, but we certainly will. And then I submitted a waiver list, which is, in my opinion, having done a lot of these, very complete, and gives some explanation as to the reasons why we think either waiver is appropriate or perhaps not even applicable. And on that score, as I say at the start of any hearing, I'm happy to go over the waivers anytime. Sometimes it makes more sense until you have peer review, which we had heard from Ms. Stockman. You know, we paid the check, I shouldn't say we, Ed brought over the check for peer review for the account, and I know that that will be underway with Beal and Thomas. So just a couple of other things that I would like to say. I just mentioned the waivers. As I said in my letter, and even at the last hearing, the reason that we do believe that this site is appropriate for development, and without getting back to arguing about 16 units, because we're here in front of you for 12 units, but we do think it is very reasonably developed with a proposal on the environmental concerns that, on the Cape, there often are some. But the site is not located within any estimated or priority habitats of your species. It does not contain certified or potential vernal pools. It does not contain map streams. It's not land subject to flooding, and it's not located within an area of critical environmental concern. And on the septic system, and, you know, you may have questions, which unfortunately the engineer isn't here, but it is designed to comply with Title V. It's not a nitrogen-sensitive area, and we haven't asked for waivers. I don't believe that any waivers are required from the Town of Falmouth Board of Health Regulations. So we believe in that sense it's fully compliant and that it lays out well. And just a couple of other things. I'm going to mention something on the subdivision, so I'll just respond briefly to Brian Wall's letter that he filed today. And I've known Mr. Wall forever, respect him. Naturally, we do disagree. We don't think that the traffic impact in terms of number of trips is going to be serious at all. I will take responsibility for miscommunication with our expert. We do have retained Jeffrey Dirk from Vanoss and Associates, and he will hopefully be able to come to the next hearing, but he will have a report that's almost done that focuses especially on the site lines, the site distances. We know that that is important, and we had discussed that with the neighbors through Mr. Wall. And, you know, the report will show that with some vegetative clearing and moving of one or two mailboxes, that the site distances are fine. So we can certainly answer questions on that, but I would suggest that we wait until Mr. Dirk, I submit Mr. Dirk's letter, and he can be, sure.
Sure, it's me, but can I ask you to speak up a little bit?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry. Sometimes these mics, I don't know whether they're picking up or not.
They don't amp or fly, actually.
Okay. Sorry. Sorry. So in any event, on the traffic, again, I take responsibility for miscommunication. That's why you couldn't be here, but we will address that. And I know that that concerned the neighbors. And then I'll mention one thing about the subdivision, but since it relates to subdivision plan, just one other thing from Mr. Wall's letter. He says that the subdivision control law is a state law, which cannot be waived, but just to be factual, that is just outright incorrect. It's seminal law. It's been around for decades. One of the earliest cases on 40B, Mahoney versus Board of Appeals of Winchester. If you'd like a copy, I can hand it in. But the summary at the start, does SJC rule that the statute 40B permitting zoning Board of Appeals to override, permit it, I'm sorry, that it does permit the zoning Board of Appeals to override the requirements of the subdivision control law in granting a permit, and that overriding such provisions of subdivision control law would not deny a budding property owner his equal protection? So you have the power to review and approve the subdivision plan that we have approved, that we've presented, as well as to grant waivers from the local subdivision rules and regulations, which we have asked for some. They're outlined in our, you know, detailed request. And they're not an unusual number of waiver requests, you know. The number shouldn't affect things. If they result in an adverse, serious, dangerous situation, which we don't think at all is the case, that would be something that a zoning board naturally would want to deal with. But I just wanted to mention that. And then I'll turn it over to Ed, except to say one thing. One of the concerns I know had been where the original layout of the road, as it comes up from Trotting Park Road, went straight up and then almost a perpendicular turn into the property at the top of the lot. Now it's been moved down about 50 feet, 50 or 54 feet. Ed will explain that. So when you go up Trotting Park Road, you don't go all the way up to where the homeowners on the rest of Percival would go up and turn. It's about 50 feet lower than that, so that congestion is addressed, as well as the site distances, which, again, I'll defer to Jeffrey Dirk when we have his written report, and hopefully when he can be here. So we think that that speaks a lot to the concerns that neighbors had raised, as also does the fact that the road that is on our property is a good 20 feet away from the road parallel above it, Percival, and that is a buffer zone. It's going to be vegetated. That's an area where we contemplate the more robust plantings that I just mentioned earlier. And we will, of course, submit a plan both to the neighbors through Brian Wall, as well as to the zoning board. So I'll stop there and let Ed go through the slides.
Hi, I'm Ed Montero, the applicant for the development. The development consists of 12 single-family homes. There will be ranch-style homes with three bedrooms, two full baths. The lots range in size anywhere from 11,500 square feet to 14,000 square feet. There will be town water on the property and private septic systems. If you look at where the common area is, that is a buffer zone that's left natural. Walter Hamano, who was the drainage engineer, has left as much of the natural property up as possible for drainage and to have a buffer from the neighbors to the north and to the south. On some of the other engineering plans, I can show that to you. But where the common area is, it's approximately about 22 feet. Then you come into the road where it turns in over here to, where it comes right here to the S-turn, coming into where all of the homes are located. The homes from where the common area is to basically where the homes that will be built is 75 feet from the butters. The lot, the road has a T turnaround that we did, which was requested to do it that way. So when you come into the end of the road, that is for the fire department and fire trucks to turn around if there is any type of an emergency.
They're on the full set of windows that you see, which are more detailed on the septic and the, I'll go up to the microphone.
I think Ed was standing just to see if you have any questions, which is fine, but we didn't intend, without the engineer, to go through sheet by sheet. I can say that somewhat obvious, but because the stormwater management system did work last time, and now there's substantially less impervious area, so, you know, there have been no significant changes to that design. That summarized in the two-page report or narrative that we included in the package from our engineer. And then I already had said, but yes, the septic is a little different in that previously, I think there were some shared systems with a condominium idea, but there's enough room here, as you heard and saw, for reasonably sized lots. They're not teeny lots, and they will each have their own Title V compliant septic system. So perhaps Ed and I should both stay up here and answer questions if you have them. Thank you.
Any questions? Jerry?
Quick question. The Title V system will be owned individually by the owners and not by the association.
Correct.
Maintained.
Correct.
That is correct. Thank you.
Right. I'll start with a comment. I went out to take a look at this the other day, and I didn't find the staking to be particularly helpful. I was not sure what I was looking at. And particularly where this road, this common driveway intersects Percival Road, I would like to see that better staked, and the stakes should, we have a staking policy, which we kind of really think is very important, where it's not just a stake, but also on the stake is what we're looking at. Like if this is the north side of the street, south side of the street, so we know where we are and what we're looking at. I would really appreciate it if that were.
Okay. Well, if you walked the property, you would have saw all of the stakes for where the road was, where the road is, the individual lots that are on the property, which are probably confusing when you drive down the road. If you look up here at the northwest property, right there, there is a boundary stone across the street which says corner lot. So when you're driving actually on the road, you're actually driving onto the property itself. So it's a little confusing, so you think when you're coming down on Percival Road, whether you're coming from the Cape Verdean side, where the Cape Verdean Club is, or from the Trotting Park roadside, as soon as you make either a left turn or a right turn, you are on my property. And then there is a stake right here that shows says corner bound, which actually butts up to where Mr. Oberholz's house is, and all of these properties here butt up to the property.
Okay. Well, I just make that as a comment, but I drove up and down Percival Road, and I got out and I walked up and down. I didn't go the whole distance, but I walked around, and I was not sure what I was looking at.
Yeah. Well, I understand both of you, and I would simply say, and I don't think I need to talk to you privately, Ed, I'll go out there with that. I'm sure we can make it more clear. And even though it's a, you know, small site, but perfectly acceptable to us if the board would like to schedule a site visit. Wouldn't take too long, I think mainly to orient, you know, everybody to answer Ed, sorry, Frank's questions. So if you'd like to schedule a site visit, you know, we're happy to do that.
About that later.
Yeah, sure. No, I know.
It might be useful to have somebody show us what we're looking at.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. No, that's why I say that. Yep.
Okay. Now, the next question is about this common area. You say there's a 20-foot separation between the common driveway and the Percival Road. Actually, that's going to remain natural, or you're going to put plantings in it, or what?
It remains natural with the trees, according to, we have the drainage report, and there is a drainage system that's there. Hold on.
We have discussed, as Mr. Wall would say, you know.
Part of that. Are you going to use that 20-foot strip for drainage, too?
Yes, I'll, I'm going to bring that up. How do you turn the pages on the mouse? Just.
Just hit the plus.
No, the plus was zooming it in. Hold on.
There's a slide on the far right. You can. On the very edge. All the way. One more. There. And I'll pull that.
Oh, okay. Thank you. That is part of the drainage system that's in the common area side. Basically, it's drainage, and you have your catch basin, which will be exposed, and then everything else remains natural with the trees and grass, to have the pitch of the road going towards the drainage. And the other drainage is, right there, well, Lot 9, 10, and 11 is, there is the other drainage that's required for the 100-year storm watch. And then you have the final drainage, which is at the end of the T turnaround, which meets the requirements of the 100-year storm watch. the requirements of the 100-year storm watch.
Excuse me, sorry about that. Yeah, and if I misspoke, because I don't know how much can be done exactly with the drainages, but we do intend to take a look and see, as I had mentioned to Mr. Wall, if we can add some more robust landscaping there in addition to what's there. It is from memory, when I've been out there, it is pretty thick already. But again, we know the concerns that have been expressed by neighbors, and we certainly want to do everything we can to try to satisfy them.
Well, I saw a comment somewhere that, and it's typically the board's policy, well, always has been as far as I know, that all drainage be contained on the site.
It is.
It is on the site, yeah.
No, not this time.
Mark?
My really only concern here, and again, I didn't, I couldn't quite figure the demarcation, but I actually used to own the house on the corner of Percival Road as well, Jessica and Leonard Salzman.
Which ones that, is that the first one?
You're going to turn right into Percival?
Yep.
The one on the corner. It used to be Gonzales.
Oh, okay.
Then I bought it from Lawson.
Oh, okay.
And Manuel used to own it.
Yeah, his daughter owns it now.
Okay, that's the name. So it looks like when I owned it, I was mowing your property. And those trees that Manuel has planted on the corner are actually on your land as well, so they will be removed.
That is correct.
Because, again, I saw quite a severe accident there, and it was partially caused by those trees that somebody planted on your property. So that's really not an issue.
Well, they have been removed, and back a year ago, the town actually straightened out the sidewalk and the road on that. And they also removed the fence and the trees that were there that were hindering the site.
So the town where the sidewalk ends, where the pad for the...
Mm-hmm.
That's going to remain, that's the...
That is correct.
That's the actual...
That is correct.
Corner right there.
Mm-hmm.
I really don't have any other, I mean, 2.4 units an acre. I don't have anything further at the moment.
Show me the picture of the...
I was actually a little concerned with the common area, too. Who's going to maintain that?
Commonly will be an association, so the homeowners will have an association for any of the common areas for grass as standard in any type of subdivision. It'll be a homeowners' association.
The neighbor's request for a fence, is that...
I mean, I'm not going to be putting up a fence because you have the natural vegetation, again, which is for the...
Yeah, just thinking of Percival, like with the, you can't see through it, but it is, I could see the demarcation there with the...
Would you be opposed to a fence in the area where the drainage is, where you may not be able to keep as much green space there or trees?
I'm sorry, could you say that again, please?
Be opposed to some type of fencing or screening in the areas where the drainage catch basins are located, where you would not be able to have as much green space, trees, shrubs, or so...
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely. And we respect questions like that. I certainly can't speak for Ed, but I'm glad you said that without our huddling. I mean, we'll, you know, see what we can do, because again, we want to satisfy you folks, of course...
I realize we're preliminary, but just...
Yeah.
But the one that you have to realize is when the engineers, when they give you drainage design or whatever, you have to follow that up, because you have a PDA and an EDA, where they're calculating all of the rain and how much natural type of vegetation they want for absorption. So we can do extra plantings, but we always have to run it by them to make sure it's not going to be clogging the drain or any hindrance to the drain for any type of water flow going in off the road.
Fair point. Any other board questions?
Yeah, just the issue of the boundary on Harness Drive, that will be addressed by the time where...
All the boundaries from the survey that we have, you have the... Here is the survey as stamped by Jack Landis-Collie and Rick Hood. We actually have the boundary stones that we found from the original property dating back to 1923. All of these bounds have been found. What she's talking about right here is Harness Lane. There is, if there's any encroachments that we did, the engineers would have to put it on, there is no encroachments where Harness Lane comes in. And this is where the easement right here is for when you tie in the town water. Basically, when the town water comes into the main road and stops, you have two fire hydrants every 500 feet. But what the town has requested is you tie into where Harness Lane is, they have town water, so the water is looped around, so it circulates, so it's not a dead end when they go to flush it out. But all of these boundary stones in, and they've been found on the property.
Anything else, Mark?
No, no, I actually think I recall a boundary stone in my backyard.
Public comment.
Can I just have a minute to put my...
Of course.
Stick in here. Mr. Montero, can I take that out?
Yeah.
Good evening through the chair, members of the board. My name is Brian Wall. I'm an attorney. I have an office in Sandwich. And I'm here tonight, as some of you probably already know, representing three abutters to the project, Daniel Colthury, Patricia Harris, and Mr. and Mrs. Oberholz. And they live just to the north of the property, up in this area here. My clients are opposed to the revised plans. They were proposed, opposed to the previous plans. I have submitted a letter this evening, but I will keep my comments brief, because it appears there's going to be some additional hearings. First, just a few preliminary matters. There was a mediation, and I obviously am bound by the confidentiality as well, and I'm not going to talk about it. But my understanding of the outcome of the mediation was that there was an agreement that the board would allow this remand hearing and that the applicant could have new plans considered. And I don't think that there's any agreement that the board is not free to review these plans and to decide anew on these plans. The second point I want to make, and I'm not a surveyor, but I just, the very last point that was made, these plans are stamped by a professional land surveyor, his name is Mr. Hood. However, there's a note on the plan that says the instrument survey was by a Mr. Stephen Doyle, who I think is now deceased. I'm not saying that complies or doesn't comply, but I just want to bring that to your attention, that the person that stamped the plan didn't do the survey. Having said that, third preliminary point, we're starting from the perspective that if this were as-of-right development, because of the agricultural district that this property is in, because of the watershed resource and coastal pond overlay sections that this is in, we think that the property would suffice for two lots and two houses. So that's what's allowed as of right, and what's currently being proposed is 12. So with regard to the 12, I have three areas that I'd like to just briefly talk about tonight. The first concerns the prior proceedings, the prior decision of the board, and how that relates to this particular new plan. I think it should not be forgotten that the prior board, and I see some new faces that are here now, the prior board held 12 public hearings on this matter that spanned a period of 16 months, and ultimately, the board voted unanimously to deny the project. The board issued a 10-page decision with 31 numbered paragraphs of findings, and review of those findings easily confirms that the board had serious concerns with the project, including but not limited to the following: a failure to demonstrate compliance with the coastal pond overlay district, failure to demonstrate compliance with the water resource overlay district, failure to demonstrate compliance with the wildlife corridor requirements, and most significantly in our view, a confusing and dangerous road design that had received comments from the planning board, the town engineer, both recommending against approval, and the peer review engineer saying that there were problems with the design. I could go on, but suffice it to say that the board had a well-thought-out and serious concerns with the health and safety issues and denied the project. The new project does reduce the number by four insofar as the housing units are concerned, but we believe that the project is substantially similar to the project that was denied, and we believe that the proposed plan hardly addresses the concerns that caused the board to deny the project the last time. The second point I'd like to make tonight concerns the road design. And I'd like to tell the new members that I see here that were not on the board the last time and to remind the members that were, that the proposal began, as you see on the screen right now, the applicant proposed 16 houses, and when he began his process, he thought that he had rights, we believe he thought he had rights, to Percival Road. And what he was going to do was to use the existing road here, and he thought that he could have access all along here, and he provided each house with a driveway. And what this did also was it provided two means of egress and exiting and ingressing. You can look up here, that this is an outlet over here. My clients knew that this section of Percival Road here on the north is actually a private easement that relates to their properties alone, and that the subject property has access over this first initial part of Percival Road only. We brought that to the attention of the board and to the attention of the applicant. And what he had to do was he had to completely rethink his design. And what he did was, and I would suggest kind of almost on the fly, he just drew a road in where you saw him present it before, parallel to Percival Road. And we suggest that he kind of had to back himself into this design. And he didn't, if you notice, what he ended up with was, if you look at the layout of these houses and the drives, it's hardly different than what he had proposed before. So in other words, he ran into a major design problem, redrew the road, but didn't redraw anything else. And what he did was he connected the road to Percival Road, simply where it was convenient for him to do so. And what happened as a result of that was he lost the second means of egress. He created a 1,200-foot-long dead-end street. He created this new intersection right here that has conflicts with Percival Road right here. And he funneled, and this is a critical point, too, he now is funneling all of the traffic to this one single point as a means of ingress and egress. The planning board reviewed this revised design and said it was dangerous and confusing to motorists, and they voted not to support the project. The town engineer said that the road had access issues, and he recommended against the design. And the peer review engineer said that waivers would be required in order for the design to go forward. The developer did not further try to make the road any safer or change the layout of his houses. What he simply did was he asked for more waivers. And as I was saying a moment ago, the volume is something to be considered. The last project had 16 homes, and so under the subdivision regulations, each home is presumed to create 10 trips per day. So if you do the math, that's 160-vehicle trips per day. But in addition to the new development on Percival Road and up here on Cardozo Road, which is not on the plan, but it's up here, there are at least seven existing homes. And so if you apply the same math, those homes are adding 70-vehicle trips to the road. And it's this part here that the road is shared, Mr. Montero owns to the middle and has rights to pass and repass, but it's also the means of access to my client's properties and others. So when you add the total up, that's 230 trips a day that was under the old project being added to the system, or would have to accommodate the system. And in addition, another topic came up where there was, these are these things here called site triangles, that when one comes up to a stop sign and looks left or right, there's supposed to be an area of clearing so that you can see the oncoming traffic. And I'm not a traffic engineer, so I'm not going to get into the technicalities, but essentially, the site triangles have to be of a size that relates to the speeds on the nearby roads so that you can see the cars coming soon enough. And it's my recollection from all of the proceedings before that there was a conclusion that these site triangles are not adequate, that they're substandard, and that Mr. Montero talked about cutting trees down and moving mailboxes, but he doesn't own or control that land, and so it's not possible. So the point here is that all of this additional traffic that's going to be funneled to this particular intersection here is being funneled to a substandard intersection, and it's going to increase congestion, traffic, potential for accidents. And the other thing it will do, and this is kind of common sense, not from a traffic engineering perspective, is that when one comes to a stop sign and you can't see clearly, you wait for the right opportunity to go out. And so our suggestion and our contention is that because this intersection is substandard, the wait time is going to increase, and with all this new traffic added, there's going to be the potential for backups on the road and congestion. Now, the revised plan does change this a little bit. You can see here that what they have done is, because they've reduced the number of houses, they had a little bit more space here, and they've moved the road down, I heard Attorney Freeman say about 50-plus feet. That was obviously done to address the planning board's concern, which said that there was no separation there and created quite a bit of confusion. But our contention is that this is still a very unusual design. It's going to have conflicts between the different people that are using it. And to the last point that I was just made about the backups that might occur here during rush hours, it's going to back up to this intersection and causing further conflicts. The point being is if you go back to the beginning where I started with this, this was never the intended design, and it's being essentially shoehorned and squeezed to try to make it work. And our contention is that it does not work. So what we contend should be done, we respectfully suggest that there be a traffic engineer that takes a look at this. And I heard Mr. Freeman say that they have one. What I would suggest is that the zoning board have its own peer review by a traffic engineer. The engineer that reviewed the matter last time was not a traffic engineer. And I would respectfully submit to you that the board can do this with little to no expense and with little to no delay by availing itself to the Cape Cod Commission. We all know the Cape Cod Commission is a reviewing authority that reviews big projects. But one of the things that it does for all the member towns that pay a fee to be part of the Cape Cod Commission is that it provides technical assistance when the town doesn't have it available at its needs. And just a short vignette, my partner was the former town attorney in Bourne, and there was a very contested case at the Rotary, which is a regional traffic area regarding Cumberland Farms, and the town of Bourne needed some technical assistance, and they called the Cape Cod Commission, and they used the services of the traffic engineer. And he was excellent. He provided excellent advice to the town. And I would urge you to do that in this case. And finally, the last point that I'd like to make tonight is concerning the waivers. So Chapter 40B, as I'm sure you well know, allows a developer to come before the board and ask for waivers. In other words, he can override zoning because there's a policy decision being made to promote affordable housing, we allow them, there to be certain waivers from local regulations. However, waivers are not a right or an entitlement. The developer has to come forward and provide a list, and those that were on the board remember last time, I kept asking for that list time and time again, and it either wasn't being provided or it kept changing. Attorney Freeman is an expert, I would concede, in 40B, and he has done a good job to provide this board with a list of waivers. But that was just the point I was trying to get to the last time. Now the board has to do something that it didn't do before. As I said, waivers are not a right or an entitlement. The board has to consider the waivers that are being requested in conjunction with the local concerns that are embodied in your regulations and your zoning bylaws. And then the board has to make a balancing test, so to speak, to determine whether or not the project adequately addresses what's called local concerns. And local concerns is with a capital L and a capital C, and it's defined in the 40B regulations as follows: local concern means the need to protect the health and safety of the occupants of a proposed project or the residents of the municipality to protect the natural... a proposed project or the residents of the municipality, to protect the natural environment, to promote better site and building design in relation to the surroundings and municipal and regional planning, or to preserve open spaces. And so if you go back to the beginning of my presentation, this board decided the last time around that the project did not demonstrate compliance with the coastal overlay district, the water resource protection district, the wildlife corridor. Now you have the list of waivers, and the board denied the project last time, so you never got into this balancing test. But now you have to get into that. And I would respectfully submit that when you get into the nuts and bolts and the details, that the waivers that are being requested are beyond what should be granted, that local concerns should prevail, and that a project can go here, but not this one. It has to be one that is much less dense to protect the local concerns that are embodied in your regulations, and also a much less dense project will also similarly address the traffic problems that I've mentioned before. So in summary, our, our simple suggestions are, one, the board made the right decision the last time, and this project that's come before you does not justify change in your mind, and you're not compelled to by that mediation. Number two, I submit that with the continuance that's going to be requested, that you submit these plans to your planning board and to your town engineer, and that you call the Cape Cod Commission for technical assistance. And finally, if and when you get to it, please review the waivers very, very carefully and go through that balancing test to come out with the right decision. Thank you. I'm available for any questions.
That's a compliment to you. That was 15 minutes on the mark.
I intended it that way. No, just kidding. Thank you.
Back to the applicant at this point, then. Oh, excuse me, someone rising. Sir, go right ahead.
Good evening. My name is Ron Garcia, and I stand here tonight as a local resident. I'm here to support a local developer. We hear a lot about affordable housing and the dire need for housing that, quite frankly, just in a lot of cases, doesn't exist. With that in mind, we have someone who is looking to do only 12 single-family units on a five-and-a-half-acre parcel. Most 40B projects that we see have considerably more density. And it's the developer's option to initially request, I should say it was his option, to initially request only 16 units, because technically, he could have asked for a lot more. But I think it's the respect that he is providing or bringing to the table, that he did not want to see a project with a lot of density, even though he probably could have gotten the approval. So with that, I'm, I stand here to say, I certainly would like to see the board favorably consider the request. Obviously, with whatever requirements that you see fit, I'm not saying as presented, I'm saying work it through, whatever technical issues that have to be done. Then again, we see much larger 40B projects in town. Don't have to go that far right from this building, and we see many projects being approved. And I would venture to say, the majority of those projects are being done by non-local And here we have someone who has gone through the Falmouth School System, went to college, came back, started a couple of businesses, that being real estate sales, developing property. And this is someone that's going to be, bring jobs to the town that I think we need. So my last comment will be, it's something that should be considered, that this property was in the same family for over 100 years. So it's just at this, at this time that the owners decided to do something with the land. But again, it's been in the same family for over 100 years, which is pretty remarkable. That's the end of my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any additional public comments? Back to you, counsel.
I will also be brief, really just responding to some of the things that Brian Wall said, and as I said earlier, I respect him. Just a few things. His somewhat lengthy history was accurate, but it is essentially not relevant to what you're looking at now. Secondly, I think it's too broad a brush and inaccurate to say that it's substantially the same project. There are very significant changes. The density is reduced by approximately 30%. The road design has changed. We've addressed the site distances. As I said, we will have that for you, but we know that that is a legitimate concern, and we have addressed it, and it will come out okay. I do believe that our expert will satisfy you on that. Likewise, in terms of the projected, I will say, by Mr. Wall, increase in the number of vehicle trips and further congestion at the intersection, the main intersection with Trotting Park Road. Jeffrey Dirk can address it as the professional, but even with the 10 vehicle trips per day that your bylaw has, and the ITE used to have that number, Institute of Transportation Engineers, now I think it's a little less, and I think Mr. Wall's letter acknowledged that it's more like nine, but call it 10 for around numbers. There's 12 houses, 120 vehicle trips per day. You know, they're spread out over the day, and typically, it's maybe a third of the total trips are at any PM or morning, peak hour. So unless my arithmetic is really off, you know, you may have one additional vehicle per minute, maybe, maybe two or one and a half on average. And I, again, as Brian said, he's not a traffic engineer, neither am I. But we can discuss that further with Mr. Dirk. And any review, we have no problem with a review, whether you hire a separate peer reviewer or Cape Cod Commission, we welcome the peer review. We think it'll really help satisfy you. But there really is not going to be any negative impact on the intersection or increase in traffic that's going to cause any problem with just so few cars per minute being added to the, to the network there. And, you know, the additional road above Percival, I forget the name of it, but that, that's nothing to do with our project, you know? So when you project total, total vehicle trips, that is what it is, it's an existing condition, and, and we're simply not adding that many. So as we said earlier, we're open to working still with the neighbors to respond to things that you have, and naturally, to your peer reviewers. So I don't think we really, you know, have anything else. I would add just one thing. Ed didn't put up the plans, the house plans, but they fit in. I think they're attractive, and they don't, they shouldn't really offend anybody. They fit in, and they are going to address, you know, the need in the community. So that's the only other thing that we hadn't mentioned. So we're, we're, and again, I had already mentioned the waivers. I appreciate Brian acknowledging that we were thorough this time, and we fully, fully expect to, you know, go over them with you. So we are of like mind on that as well. So with that, I'll rest and see if you have any other questions.
Do we have any follow-up questions?
Did you have a, if you said it, I don't recall, a date when you have your traffic engineer report into us?
Oh, yeah, it'll be very soon to get it into you, and I don't know what your schedule is, but I did ask Mr. Dirk when he's available, and he would be available on June 8th, and thinking that Beal and Thomas, I assume they have the plans now, but that hopefully would be time for them to also have a report, you know, back to the board and to us.
No, I was just thinking whether we were going to ask for our own peer review. I'm sorry, it's for the board discussion later. And Mr. Wall mentioned submitting an agreement, a document that was called an agreement.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Wall, Attorney Wall, referenced an agreement that you could submit for our review that wouldn't violate your confidentiality.
I'm not sure I heard him to that respect, so I'm not quite sure. Happy to have Mr. Wall respect, respond to your question.
I'm sorry, I didn't really understand the question.
I thought you had mentioned that an agreement could have been submitted to us for our review that would not violate the confidentiality.
I think that there might have been two separate points I was making. What I was saying about the confidential mediation agreement, without getting into the details, which I can't, my, my contention, and if I'm...
Or we.
Right. And if, if Mr. Freeman or if the board disagrees with what I'm saying, please say so. But my understanding about that agreement was that this is not a fait accompli, it was just an agreement that they could come back, there could be some further hearings on, on, on a plan. There's no, there's no final agreement. The point I was making about the Cape Cod Commission is that the Cape Cod Commission has available to towns inside Barnstable County technical assistance, and you can call them up when you have a very specialized, you know, I know you have a town planner and a town engineer, but for example, when you're dealing with the solar farm issue that you're dealing with on the golf course or something like this traffic, you can call the Cape Cod Commission, and they have people in traffic, historic, wetlands, et cetera. And they're available to the town, because every town that's a member of the commission pays a fee to be part of the commission, and that's one of the services that they provide. And so my suggestion was that with little to no cost to the town, you can avail yourself to some expertise in this matter.
Yep. Thanks, Brian.
And just so, so you know, yes, I agree. I mean, we've both said ad nauseam, we can't say what happened in the mediation, but, but I, I think, and if I didn't include in my introductory remarks, but I'm pretty sure I did, that yes, we know that, we, we hope there's a meeting of the minds for the reduced project, but that absolutely is subject to your view. And if you wind up believing that there's unsafe conditions or whatever else it is, then you may not, you know, approve the 12. I am not starting a debate, but in essence, as I say, I agree with what he had said. You know, we know it's subject to review, and that's why, frankly, we tried to give as much detail as possible, including the waivers, and also why we welcome the peer review.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank, any additional follow-up questions?
Not at this time.
Mark.
First off, a reduction, not that it's, I'm not saying that it's insignificant, but a, a reduction from 16 to 12 is 25%, not 30, as you mentioned.
Glad I said I'm not good at math.
I'm, I, I have great familiarity with the road, and I've actually seen many accidents there. To be honest with you, I've never seen one coming out of Trotting Park, coming out of Percival onto Trotting Park, but it is a, certainly people exceed the speed limit. And, you know, call me a skeptic, but I think anybody can, half the time, get whatever they want on somebody's survey, so I wouldn't be adverse to the Cape Cod Commission looking at the intersection of Percival and Trotting Park. And while we're at it, aren't there, aren't there some concerns with the wetlands and the recharge? Couldn't we get them to give their opinion on that as well?
Well, I don't even think that was expressed as a real concern in the initial decision, but there are no wetlands. We are not jurisdictional with, with...
Is there a recharge area there?
No, it's not in a recharge area. There is one, there is a, I think it's called a sec, Area C, lowest area of concern in a Zone 2 under the state, but that's, I forget which corner, but one small corner of the property Ed can show you when our septic systems are not there. So...
Well, you wouldn't be adverse to them confirming that?
We can get who are we, our own peer engineers.
Yeah, yeah, Beal and Thomas would confirm that, I would assume, yeah.
We already had a wildlife engineer.
No, I was, I, I, and excuse me, I'm not completely up, I didn't start on this thing.
Okay, there is no wetlands, because you, on, on the original hearing, when it went before conservation, they had no comment. There was no wetlands or any type of vegetation that would be violated, and it's not in a Zone 2 or an area of critical condition. Where it does stop is, it comes, it's on this area right here. And if that's, and if that's the case, you have new houses that are coming up if it is. You already had two new houses built on Percival Road down by the Cape Verdean Club, regular Title V septic systems and everything else. If there's any type of critical area, they would have asked for a different type of septic system. So, I mean, so on, on the Title V requirements that we have, we need it for each of the homes that are going to be three bedrooms.
Okay, I'd just like to point out one more thing. With either Mr. Wall's numbers or yours or whatever, 10 trips a day per dwelling, I'd just like to submit to you, being quite familiar with the area, that the chances are 20 or 25% of those people are going to come out and turn right and go down towards the Cape Verdean Club anyway, just for convenience. So, I mean, the reality is, it's only going to lessen the concern of the traffic on Trotting Park, which is still a concern to myself.
Well, the one thing, he's just using general statistics. Again, we'll have our traffic engineer come in there. Because if you use his numbers, then no 40B would, would get approved.
Yeah.
You've got 48 units on the corner of, you know, Main Street and Scranton Avenue, so that's 480 cars coming out of a residential project, so there's not going to be any problems during the summertime. So if we're going to start exaggerating...
Well, no, I'm not exaggerating.
I'm just talking, I'm not saying, I'm just talking in general.
If I could, if I could just interject for a minute, my suggestion on the issue of...
We'll wait for the experts.
Exactly. That was going to be my suggestion, just to wait for the engineering experts to submit their reports and...
Well, you don't have to be an expert to know that there's a certain amount of people that are going to turn right and go down Percival.
Yep, but we're going to move the hearing along now. Questions?
My turn. I'm glad that you are working with the neighbors. That's much appreciated, and I do like the idea of the Cape Cod Commission. I hope we can pursue it. I don't know about a time, I don't know what their schedule would be.
Terms of peer review, why don't we have a little discussion amongst the board on how we wish to proceed, if we want town engineering or if we want innovative peer review?
Just for the board's information in preparing for the meeting for tonight, we were able to arrange for Bealson Thomas to be the peer engineering firm representing the town. Developer has paid the fee to cover those costs, and we are just finalizing the engineering contract, which has been approved by the town. So they have received, Bealson Thomas has received the current plans, the former plans as well, and would be anticipating attending the next meeting to give you their review.
Excellent.
Great.
They have a traffic engineer on staff or...
I don't know. I can check with them, but I think if Cape Cod Commission has the capability, we can certainly check with them.
If they're, if they don't have one on staff, I think that the board, it sounds like, would like to have traffic engineer review.
Oh, yes, most of them.
Yeah, the parties have made it.
And whatever can be done quickest, I mean, I don't know, schedule for the Cape Cod Commission.
If you could just make inquiry, and if not, get it to the Cape Cod Commission as fast as possible, please, norah. So we're looking at a continuance at this point.
I would like to have a site visit, perhaps by the board, with Mr. Montero present, probably before the next hearing. It would be very helpful to really, in my head, know what I'm looking at and talking about.
It was confusing at the...
More than reasonable. Mr. Montero, is there a weekend that, schedule that, Mr. Wall?
Just at some point, could I just...
Just come up to the microphone so we can catch everything for the purposes of our viewers at home. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I just wanted to, I didn't want to leave something unrebutted. I wanted to address what Member Murphy said. Attorney Freeman and I do know each other. We get along very well, consider ourselves friends, I think. But I just want to clarify something. We are talking about things, but we're not talking about the same things. So when there's an impression left that there's work being done with, to the neighbors, we are talking, but I would disagree that the developer's making sincere efforts to try to address my client's concerns.
Thank you for that clarification.
Do we invite Mr. Wall to attend this?
It's technically, we have to, we have to notice, and it's a meeting, so it would be, well, it would be public.
Okay, now, since in the past, someone said no one else can speak it. It wasn't you, but, you know.
So typically, when you do a site visit, you would be able to ask the developer questions about where something is, et cetera, but the board is not allowed to deliberate or discuss amongst yourselves that all has to take place at the next open meeting?
Could Mr. Wall ask questions, since it's an open meeting?
At a site visit?
Yep.
I think if it pertains to the site itself.
No, that's, yeah.
Counsel, what do you want to weigh in?
We wouldn't have any objection to Mr. Wall joining, but, you know, I mean, questions get closer to testimony, and that's similar to what Noreen said. So, you know, there's no talking amongst the board. Any question should just be orientation, which is what...
Clarification, it's the placement of stakes.
Yeah, yeah. So not...
Of a deliberative discussion.
Yeah, so we shouldn't be making statements pro or con, you know, but yes, just to answer questions, and certainly if Mr. Wall wanted to know where something was, et cetera, just like you folks, yeah, that's fine.
Is there a weekend, I presume that people would prefer to do this on a weekend, or...
Saturday morning again?
Yeah, I would suggest, is there some dates that you have available that would be good for the board, you'd like to propose? And what are we looking at in terms of a next hearing date, Noreen?
So next hearing date, we're proposing to be June 8.
It'll be June 3?
I will be away.
You're away? 27th is a long weekend. Or the 20th.
It's the birthday. So that's the birthday.
It's your birthday, isn't it? I can bring you cake.
Bring me some.
We just can't talk.
Saturday, the 27th?
It's, that's a long weekend. I don't know. I can do it.
Memorial Day weekend.
Yep. So 20th, 13th is a little, little short.
I can't do 13. I have something to do.
20th?
I think it's okay.
Of May.
When's Mother's Day?
14.
Okay, sorry. Don't let my wife know I've done Mother's Day.
We'll make sure she knows. Mr. Montero?
I'm sorry.
May 20th work for you?
That should be fine.
Counsel?
Yes, I actually may not be able to be there, but that's fine.
May 20th for a site view, we have a time in mind.
Nine o'clock?
Nine or 10?
Nine.
Who's traveling the furthest?
I was going to say, who's travel?
Ten.
Ten, I am. You'll make sure we get a proper public notice after that. Thank you.
Just for our butters' purposes, I would assume that our butters are able to attend, but that there would not be any discussion.
Is my understanding? And a hearing date, what was the date? The 8th?
Does this have to go back in front of the planning board?
No.
Okay, so there's no need to invite them?
No.
Or our town engineers?
They can go on anytime they want.
That's true.
I'll need to let Scott know, I have, I will not be here on the 8th. I have a thing in Boston that evening that, but he will be able to participate in this, even though he's not here tonight.
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure. So we have a proposed continuation to June the 8th. Is there a motion on that?
I saw a move.
Mr. Duffy, second Mr. Finneran, any discussion? Seeing none. Holes in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed. That is a vote. We'll see you back on June 8th.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next up, we, on open meeting issues, we have the minutes of April 27th.
Tabled.
Be tabled. Already dealt with the issue of number two. Number three, voting, the staking policy. Tabled. Number four, board discussion. Seeing none. Any board updates?
No.
Future agenda items?
Second block.
Do we have a date under future agendas? We'll be readdressing the issue of the staking policy, Noreen?
I think we can just continue this to the next meeting, presumptively, that we'll have all the board members present.
Yeah, that's important.
Any other business? Seeing none. Our next scheduled public hearing will be May 11th, 2023, 6:30 PM at the Selectments Meeting Room here at Town Hall. We are adjourned.